Good evening. We call to order our regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We note that we have all council members in attendance. With that, we'll have our opening ceremony and return to Councilman Buehler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome everybody out. We don't usually get this many people to our council meetings. A couple remarks I'd like to make. We do have our English Language Achievement Awards tonight, and I know that's why many of you are here. This is a program where we as city leaders like to recognize those in our city who are making an effort to learn English and taking courses to do so. We believe that we are better neighborhoods, better neighbors, better friends, better doing business, better in education, and everything else if we can all communicate with each other. We have a large immigrant population in West Valley City. We're happy to have everybody here, enjoy the diversity, but we need to be able to communicate. And English is just by default going to have to be the language in which we all communicate. We can't expect people to come from Honduras or Colombia and learn Tongan so that they can talk to their neighbors, or people to come from Vietnam or Laos and learn how to speak in German or French, right? We all need to learn how to speak English, and then we can improve our home lives, our health care that we receive, our education, employment, and be good neighbors and good friends with each other. So, welcome you here to our city, and welcome you here today. And with that, would we please all stand up and repeat the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we typically welcome special groups. We're going to have a special part of the program for those who are for the English Language Awards, but we also have some other groups here. We have, I believe I noted, three different groups come in: scout troops. We traditionally invite someone from that group, troop, patrol, whatever you are, to come forward and tell us three things: your troop number, the schools you're attending, and why you're here, what you're working on. With that then, I hope you've selected someone, and if not, you better do it quick. So who's the first one ready, on the back, towards the back there, second to the back row? Who are the first ones to come in?
So, we're troop 741.
Excuse me, have you turned around, because we want to pick it up on the microphone, see right there, if you'd speak into that?
So, we're troop 741. I don't really know what schools we go to. I go to Antioch, but what was the other thing I was supposed to say?
What are you working on?
Citizenship of something.
In the community, maybe? Quite an interesting group. Next row out.
We're troop 1137, and we go to Aurora Bank and Martha Simmons or Gerald Wright Elementary. We're here because we're working on communication or citizenship in the community.
Very good. Thank you. And we have...do we have our volunteer? You can have support come with you, but we want to hear from you.
We're...we're Mubos Yan, 1313, and we're going to build a better world and go to APA, Box Hill, and Armstrong Academy.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, I believe that was all the scout troops? Yeah, all right. Next, we'll move forward on our agenda. We have the minutes of November 17th. Turn to the council for a motion on the minutes.
Mayor move for approval of the minutes of November 17th?
And we have a second. You've had those...okay, so any discussion to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll just place that for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of November 17th, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passed unanimously. The minutes are approved. Now we go to our ceremonies and awards proclamations. We begin with Employee of the Month Award. Return to Councilman Steve Buehler for that.
Thank you, Mayor. The employee of the month is Aaron Crim. Mr. Crim, would you please stand up so everybody can look at you while I read this recommendation that was submitted by Roxanne Binukku and Catherine Schuster. Aaron has gone above and beyond to help create visual elements for a police recruiting campaign. These elements have often been requested at the last minute and have required many changes. Each time Aaron has risen to the challenge and not only created work that could be quickly utilized, but he has also created the highest caliber of work to represent the West Valley City Police Department. Aaron has also been outstanding in his efforts to promote the animal shelter through social media. Aaron has taken time to come to the shelter to help create video of unique animals, cleverly advertise items related to the shelter, which have then received great response in private numbers, promoting donations, and spreading important education information to residents. Aaron has gone over and above to post items as quickly as possible and to be responsive to questions and monitoring our Facebook page and other social media diligently. Prior to his taking control of these outlets, our adoption numbers were lower, and the fact that the shelter is not killed was not being spread as effectively. All of this has created more work for him, but he has been willing to do whatever it takes to help promote the shelter and then the process, save more animal lives, and better their living conditions here. The public relations staff relies on Aaron regularly for his ability to create beautiful imagery that complements and helps more effectively relay communication. Whether it's during the day, off hours, or even weekends, Aaron will not only help with anything he is asked, he will give it his very best. We are all very appreciative to have a great employee like Aaron on our team. Aaron, if you'd like to tell us who's here with you, or make a acceptance speech or anything else, you can have a moment to do that.
Most of the public relations staff is here tonight, I think, save for Craig Thomas, so they're pretty much my family away from home, and I spend a lot of time with them, and it's an honor to work for them, or work with them, and to work for the city. I've been here almost 15 years, and it's like home, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the presentation of the English Language Awards. And what we will invite you to do is those of you who are receiving that award tonight, if you just start lining up on this side, we'll have you come to the microphone. If you would tell us your name and what country you immigrated from. And just appreciate having you come here. If you'll start right over here. Let's go, whoever. And yes, families are welcome to take pictures. And that's okay, we don't mind. It won't be disrupting. Okay, it looks like gradually everyone is moving over there. With that then, if you'll come to the microphone, and if you need to pull that down just a little bit.
Hi, my name is Christina Lara. I'm from Mexico City, and I say thank you for giving me the opportunity to learn English and be able to communicate with the people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, I'm Antha. I'm from Vietnam. I'm very happy. I have a certified ticket. I'm very happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marlech. I'm from Brazil. Thank you for the opportunity.
My name is Lanhui. I'm from Vietnam. Thank you very much, gentlemen and lady, today. I'm very happy. In Vietnam, I worked here. I used to be a...in Vietnam, I used to be a nurse in a cancer hospital in Bo Ho Chi Minh City. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, today. Thank you, thank you.
I'm...I'm from Vietnam. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ling Pham. I'm from Vietnam. Thank you very much.
My name is Liberata Nyang. I come from Phnom Penh. I was from here in 2007. Thank you very much for letting me stay, teach, and student there right now. I am labor 3A West Bay. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Anna. My country is Mexico. Thank you for everything.
Hi, my name is Estela, and I am from Mexico, and I have been in this program for two years, and I think it's a great opportunity for us. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Carmen Cabello. I'm from Mexico, and thank you for the opportunity.
I'm from Cambodia, and my name is Terejo. I am very happy. I live here. I just came here. So smiling. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sosimo Gustamante. I am from Peru, South America. I am feel happy. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Maximiliano. I'm from Guatemala. I have been in the United States for 12 years, and I want to give a thank you for this.
Hi, my name is Thuy Hui. I'm from Vietnam. Today, I am very happy alongside one. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Thuy Hui. I'm from Vietnam. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Magali. I'm from Mexico City, and I want to say thank you for my English award, whatever they say. But I'm happy for being here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Molredi Olart. I'm from Laos. I've been here like 12 years, and I'm happy to be in this past, and thank you.
Hi, my name is Rafael Aguayo. Thank you for everything.
All right, so was that everyone? So now we'll have you come back up here. We're going to take a picture with you all in this center area. If you'd just come line up here.
Oh, yes, hold the certificate up there. Beautiful. Can I put you right in the old...you're the polis, so if you ask me, scoot over a little bit. There we go. There we go. Excuse me, just a...just a...doesn't have quite the length. I'm sorry. Okay, now I'll get out of your way.
You're welcome to come up closer if you'd like, or however you want to.
Mayor, I think we ought to recognize, it looks like an instructor that's here.
Yes, there were. We have students from eight different countries: South America, Mexico, Asia, and Africa.
Four countries. We didn't have anybody from Europe this time, or from Antarctica? Of course, it's covered down.
Of course, since Chile claims part of Antarctica, why you...anyone from Chile you could play. All right. I did not get a copy of the comment. Does that mean no one found that? Our next thing on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone here that wanted to make any public comments, other than what's already been done? Okay, if so, then we'll move away from that. To our city manager, any comments? Okay, to the council, any comments? Have to look back and forth a couple of times, just make sure. Okay. And with that, we go next to item eight on our agenda, public hearings. This is application number GP 12015, an update of the West Valley City Plan. I should note for especially those who have not typically come to these meetings, that these items are all heard in a previous meeting. So last week, we met last week, and these were items that we discussed there, we asked questions about, so this is the second time it's coming before the council. So, although we...this is a general plan update. Our last comprehensive update was in 2009, and a lot of things have changed since then, so they were making a number of changes to the plan, based upon roads and streets, because they all have to be in our plan. This is kind of a very high view, no specific details per se, but general plans as to new streets have been added, and they're a part of our city now. I guess we hadn't updated, I guess, even light rail, because that was done in 2011. So, a number of things have changed in our plan. I don't believe there's many significant changes, but those are the types of things that were included in here. So with that introduction then, we'll bring it back to the council. Oh, let's see. That's right, public hearing, forgot that. So, the next step is we open this particular item for people to comment on. So, is there anyone here who wants to speak to this particular issue, the change in our general plan? And anyone is welcome to come up and speak. No takers. None of the scouts want to speak. Oh, okay. Then with that, we will close the public hearing portion, public input, and we'll come back to the council now for consideration of ordinance 15-38.
Thank you, Mayor. Even though there wasn't anybody that came to speak tonight, there's been several dozen different meetings with the community, as well as our planning commission, as well as city council, to rework this planning document for our city. And been substantial amount of work on updating it. I would move, however, that we give it a last couple weeks to take a look at it before we finalize it, and that we postpone action to the date certain December 15 to on ordinance
We have a motion before us. Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote, if our city recorder would take that vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Rushden?
Aye.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, next we go to item number nine, our ordinances. We have ordinance 15-39. This is to repeal, amend, or enact provisions in our code governing the administration of advisory committees for West Valley City. These are such things as our Parks and Recreation Committee, Clean and Beautiful, the Arts Council, Historical Society, Sister City Committee, and the UCCC Advisory Board. That is the issue that is being brought forward in this issue. With that then, and this one I don't need to do a public hearing on, because it's an ordinance, we'll just turn to the council then for calm interaction.
Mayor, for similar reasons, I think there's still some more discussion in the study that needs to take place with both this ordinance and the following resolution. And so I move that we postpone action on this and move it to a future date.
Second, we have a second. You're doing that just on the ordinance 15-39.
And that's one extra.
Must be four of them in this. We have a motion and a second. You've got that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rushden?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Next we go to resolution 15-189, which is a proposal. The city has had a cultural arts board, and there was some discussion about dissolving that board and approaching it in a different way, rather than with a board. But as noted, we think that this may not be quite ripe yet, so to the council for motion.
Mayor, move for continuance of resolution 15-189.
Okay, motion and a settlement before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Rushden?
Aye.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, now we go to resolution 15-190. This is to approve an inter-local agreement between ourselves, UDOT, UTA, a number of cities, Wasatch Front Regional Council, and it's for a transportation study from the north boundary of Salt Lake City to 114th South along Redwood Road, to kind of get a plan put together for that. Our portion of that study is actually $35,000. It's a portion that we have. We have Redwood Road that runs through our city. It's to determine what the needs are regarding traffic, mass transit, any needs as far as intersections, additional roadways, traffic modeling, connectivity, all sorts of things. And that will be done, of course, with those who understand those issues, and with representatives from each of those entities, including ourselves in that study. That is the issue. Issue before us then, to the council for any comment or action.
Mayor, move for approval, resolution 15-190.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing...yes, Councilman Buehler?
Just like to mention that, you know, this coming up with this study maybe isn't our idea, but we certainly want to see the table. Redwood Road is such an important part of our city that we need to be involved in any future planning with respect to that corridor.
Thank you. Good point. Anyone else? Seeing none, then replace it for a vote. Our city recorder.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
Councilman Rushden?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Next we go to resolution 15-191. This is also an inter-local agreement between a different group of cities and also the Attorney General's Office, this is, and with the Department of Public Safety, the Utah Motor Vehicle Enforcement Division, and this is for multi-jurisdictional sheriff and police services. We actually have had this come before us before, and there were just a couple of minor modifications, so we need to vote on it again. This is for working in cooperation on issues related that are shared among those cities. See if I can get that up. I think I covered everything there. I think so. So that is the issue before us. Then, to the council.
Mayor move for approval, resolution 15-191.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, just a note. I think that it's good for the public to know that all these different agencies, whether it's West Valley, or West Jordan, or Sandy, or Salt Lake, South Salt Lake, that all of our police departments do work together. And a lot of times, they have to cross boundaries to fulfill their work, and so this is just an opportunity to formalize that, and I think it's commendable that... that these agencies do work well together.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, then we'll place it for a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Rushden?
Aye.
Councilman Markel?
Yes.
And Mayor Biglow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Now, we go to our consent calendar. These are items that don't... Are pre-routine. 15-192 and 15-193, these are appointments of Don Christensen to the Housing Authority, effective in January. He will be on the council. And then, ratify the appointment of Deanne Varney as Secretary of the Licensing Hearing Board as Assistant City Recorder. Those are the two resolutions. With that, then, we can take them together and do the whole calendar or separate. To the council.
Mayor, move for approval of the two items on the consent agenda?
Second.
Properly before us? Any discussion? See none? We'll take a vote.
Councilman Markel?
Yes.
Councilman Rushden?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Biglow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. We do not have a need for an executive session. For our regular council meeting, that will conclude our business. But so you know, we will immediately convene. We have three other meetings that we will do. They're all very brief. And so, with that, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourned? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
Call to order the West Valley City RDA regular meeting. Now that we've had a opening ceremony, and all members are in attendance, tonight on the agenda, we have the minutes from November 3rd, 2015. Do you have any discussion or motion on the minutes?
Mayor, chair, move for approval of the minutes?
There a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Executive Chief Officer, do you have any report or communications?
I do not, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
Call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City's Housing Authority tonight, and opening ceremony by Calasia State Building earlier this evening. Roll call. We have a call up here tonight, and item number four is approval of minutes, and we'll turn it over to the council.
Chairman, move for approval of the minutes of November 3rd?
So, we have the motion. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of this is the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. So, this is approval of minutes passed unanimously. Item number five, number six, and number five, communications, and number six, a report of executive director, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Pire.
Thank you, sir. I have no report tonight.
Okay. Thank you. And last one is, I need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mayor. So, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Call to order the West Valley Building Authority. We've had our opening ceremony, and roll call, and you can show that all are present. We have approval of minutes of November 3rd.
Move we approve the minutes of November 3rd?
Second. Have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. We do have a communications or report from the chief executive officer?
No, sir.
We have one more motion, then?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Mayor adjourned.
Thank you. That does complete all the business. Thank you for coming tonight.